Hope everybody's doing well. Welcome to our special meeting budget study session number three today, Monday, April 28, 2025. We have a streamlined agenda, so I'm just going to hand it over to you, Mr. Nevin.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor and City Council members. Tonight is the third budget study session. The agenda for this evening starts with a police technology update, and I will hand it over now to Acting Chief Christensen. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. This evening, I have a hopefully short presentation out of respect for your time and my colleagues' time. I'll strive to make this brief. That said, I do encourage you to stop me at any slide and ask questions if you're looking for clarification. There'll also be an opportunity for questions at the end as well. I'm going to start off with a statement. We are an organization of professionals dedicated to integrity, customer service, the rights of individuals and the needs of a constantly changing society. We work in partnership with our community, protect life and property, improve the quality of life, reduce crime and the fear of crime, and maintain a safe community. That is the daily city police department mission statement and our core tenants that drive our everyday efforts and values. My focus is ensuring everything we do works in concert with our mission statement and benefits our community. Tonight's presentation will talk a little bit about emerging technology, which is the highlight of the presentation, with the focus towards community safety, officer safety and overall efficiency. We'll touch a little bit on staffing over the recent years, as I know that's been an issue that's been brought up and one that's been based on several challenges and variables, much of which have been out of our control. We'll also talk a little bit about some of the efforts that we've done to overcome some of our staffing challenges, my vision for the direction of the organization and the desire to be a frontrunner in technological adoption and implementation. And this council, or I'm sorry, this presentation does proceed a contract renewal that I plan to bring before City Council in the next two meetings or so. And a lot of this will provide an opportunity for initial questions on some of that technology that's inclusive in that service contract. Hope this works. So this is a snapshot of the last 10 years of our vacancy rates within the police department. The light blue up top are the officer vacancy numbers. The dark blue right below that are our sworn injuries, the injuries that we had for our sworn officers. The light gray are civilian vacancies, the dark gray are civilian injuries. And as you can see, it's been trending up ever since 2016. What we really recognized is during the pandemic, we saw a lot of people reevaluate life. We had a lot of people, one retired that were eligible at the time. A lot of people moved on to different professions. Several people moved out of state to go with family, took different law enforcement jobs there. So that's where you see the big jump in that 2020, 21, 22 timeframe. There was also a large component of people that were out on industrial injury in 2022, which you can see, I know one year I had counted at least 14 people out at one point in time. These are all throughout the year, specific numbers that are given at the end of the fiscal or fiscal year for the 25, 22 era. All this said, from all the accounts that I have, the pulse on morale is better than ever in the last 10 years, and people are excited about where we're going as an organization. I do expect a shift in the coming year or two, as many of the retirements, and we'll see in another slide here, came, I think we had 14 in 21, 22 alone. A lot of those retirements are going to start to slow down as a lot of our workforce is becoming much younger tenured. And so we hope for some opportunity to make up some of our vacancies here in the next probably two or three years. So this slides up here just to kind of show you from 2020 to current. So we're really looking at about four, not quite four and a half years. But over those last four, four and a half years, we've hired 52 people. We separated with 61. Forty-five percent of those resigned, 40% retired. And again, you can see 14 in just 21, 22 alone, which was kind of during that COVID era. And we had 15 released from FTO and probation. I talked a little bit about the pandemic aspect, people looking to retire and resign that were eligible. Talked a little bit about the industrial retirements. The one thing I did want to point out about that 15% that was released from FTO probation or terminated, I mentioned the mission statement at the beginning of this slide or this presentation, and I wanted to make it clear that we haven't lowered our standards just to try and fill our vacancies. We maintain that if anything, we're adhering to the accountability standards that we have. I personally meet and interview every employee we hire, and I focus on their ethical performance and their character and our convey, and we convey our expected performance standards throughout the time. Some of the challenges have come from background investigators being available. We have several contract background investigators, but they're overwhelmed. Challenges with academy availability, which have changed over the years. They no longer allow you to hold spots. You have to have actually hired employees, which can be challenging in the timeframe, which is when you look at the new hire timeline. Long story short, 14 to 18 months if somebody walks in the door today before they're a value to the police department as a sole police officer. So you can see three to four months, and that's a standard background. That's not anything getting in the way. Six months plus for an academy, then you have four to five months for an FTO program, assuming it's without any hiccups. And then you're going to have one to three month delays anywhere within that whole entire process that's going to slow things down. So it's really challenging for us to make up 29. If they were all new hires today, you wouldn't even see them for a year and a half from now. Another thing just to point out about this is the teamwork that's required. Again, these are just sworn staff. This is not to include our civilian staff, and we've had significant turnover in our civilian staff as well, especially in the last 18 months. But I do want to thank the support of you, City Council, for supporting me and allowing me to have the opportunity to do what it is that I need to do, the Police Officers Association, the City Manager, Department of Finance and the Rockstar Human Resources Department that clearly has a significant component to support us in this hiring process. So these are just some of the efforts. And what I'll do to summarize this is if it's been thought of or it's been done in the industry, we've tried it. The reality is, is we don't see huge success. We've tried social media videos, billboards, text jobs to whatever the phone number is. The employee referral program, we've actually found the majority of our best employees have come from friends of friends, family, people that they meet in the community. That's where we've seen our best hiring push. We do have a recruitment team. It's a part-time recruitment team. They go out to all job fairs. They go out to schools, they go out to military institutions, fitness locations, everywhere that might have the mindset trying to encourage candidates to come get hired. The other effort that has really been the primary focus over this last probably, I'd say, year, 18 months is a transition to the civilian positions to support our field personnel, which are the clinicians, our police assistants, our new program, which is our community service officers, which we haven't had. We had a quasi-CSO program 10, 15 years ago with two people, but this is a new program that we're seeing a lot of success with. And our crime analysts, which is a brand new thing that hasn't even really started yet, but we've got a couple coming in the next month. And then lastly, technology, data aggregation, we've talked about in the past, about bringing all the siloed data into one location, which is creates efficiency and saves time. And then we have a ton of technology when it comes to software for investigative tools, AI reporting, informs tools, which we're not utilizing yet. It does exist, but it's not ready for deployment in real time. And then information aggregation. So there's this push towards, we'll talk about in the second, real time intelligence centers, where we'll have access to cameras in the community, whether they're city-owned cameras, ones that we put out that are remote or not remote or remote or fixed cameras. And we also have the ability to tap into other people's. When I say tap in, I shouldn't say that. We have the opportunity, should the person choose to share their video footage with us directly for real time, should they choose. We can't tap into anything, just to be clear. So I think one of the biggest things that I want to focus on is retention of staff. I think this is the most important thing that we can consider when we looked at our vacancy rates and we look at how long it takes. The amount of time, the expense that goes into hiring a new police officer, economically, it's much more feasible to maintain those people internally. So anything that we can do to offset people leaving is definitely a priority of ours. So over the last couple of years, we put a wellness program together. We just finished off a wellness room with massage chairs. We call it a zen room. It's a new thing in the industry. We have fitness incentives, fitness tracking apps. External counseling services is something that we've started to drift towards as well. We're seeing some, some big encouragement for additional counseling services for officers. We've had the return of our modified duty program for a long time. We did not have modified duty. If you were out on industrial injury, you were asked to just go home and heal and then come back, and we were finding that that was causing delays. So we started our modified duty program, which has lowered our people that have been out significantly. We have an internal peer support program where interested and trained officers within the police department act as confidential outlets for the police officers just to talk to, share stories or similar situations that they may be dealing with. And we also are just now starting a chaplaincy program. So we do not have one currently. We do have one person that's in backgrounds from a local church in Daly City, and we're also looking at a second that has Daly City ties as well. So a chaplaincy program, it's not only going to be available for the officers to engage with on a weekly basis, but they're also going to be there to support the organization in the community, in the face of the community and attend community events with us as they're available. This is a voluntary program, but it's something that we saw an internal need for, we were asked internally for, and we see a huge value for out in the community as well. So where we are focused, we talked a little bit about it, but expanding field support services for our CSOs and clinicians, I'll cover those real quick. Our crime analysts, which is the next big thing we're looking to do, and then technology. Real time intelligence centers or real time crime centers, I'm sure everyone's heard of at some point. They're still kind of new, especially in smaller organizations. Places like New York, LA, some of those places have had them for a while, but it's really something that people are starting to harness as a force multiplier and a resource multiplier in smaller agencies. Drone is a first responder. Talk a little bit about it, but again, we have a drone program. We've had it for over a year. It's been phenomenal. This is the next step in that. And then data aggregation, information aggregation and artificial intelligence. So just real quick, field support services, mental health clinician, we've been in that pilot program for a long time now. We hired Kathy internally. She's been phenomenal. She was as good as she always was, and she's been phenomenal for not our staff, but field services as well. She responds to calls every day, all day long to help support mental health related calls for service. She does provide grief support in times of need, whether it be with either officers or family members. She's been great for that. She does do a lot of follow-up with some of the families that she works with, trying to find long-term solutions and not just temporary solutions in the field. Our community service program is brand new. Like I said, we're currently at five CSOs, and with our officer vacancy rate, we've been under or over, underfilling police officers with CSOs with the idea of many of these CSOs are coming to us with a desire to be police officers. They're either not ready yet, age-wise, whatever the circumstances are, so we're putting them in a CSO program, get them exposure to the field, get them exposure to the police department, training them along the way with the hopes of them transitioning into police officer positions in the coming year or so. So it's been a very, very beneficial for field service purposes. This is our big shift, crime analysts. This is where the regional intelligence center for us, or I'm sorry, real time intelligence center for us is taking shape. So we have four analysts that we've hired two. Two of them are in the background process. They're expected to start within the next month, and we have two internally already that we're utilizing. Our hope is that they'll cover 12 hours a day, six days a week for now. It's harder to do any more than that with four people with rotational schedules and whatnot. But the goal of the crime analysts will be to operate the real time intelligence center. They'll manage data flow and information sharing to the field units in real time, which is critical. And through data analysis, they'll provide resource allocation. So they'll be able to tell us where some of the problems are, crime trends, things of that nature, so we're deploying our resources more effectively and efficiently. And lastly, when they're not doing that, which I'm not really sure if is ever going to occur, but they'll be able to assist detectives and investigations on crime investigations and solving issues that we've had. Just a quick current technology, we've already talked a little bit about it, but like I said, we've had our ALPR program, our automated license plate reader program for a year now. It's generated over 200 cases, over 140 arrests, eight firearms recovered out of arrests, at least 65 stolen vehicles recovered with an estimated value of almost $1 million. So those are people's cars that we're recovering and returning back to them as a result of this ALPR program. We're probably getting, I mean, a hit a day at least on ALPR hits, if not more. And we have stopped, this is absolutely the most impactful program that we've implemented as far as preventing and investigating crimes. We have stopped plenty of people coming into our city that are in a hot list. Again, the vehicle itself has been identified in previous crimes, the people have been identified in previous crimes in different jurisdictions or regions. They come into Daly City, that plate hits one of our ALPR readers. We automatically get alerted of the location of where that vehicle was last seen. We all kind of go to that area, and we're stopping crimes from occurring weekly for sure. It's been a great program. Our UAS or unmanned aerial system, our drone program, has been up since October 23, 2023, and we have over 1,500 flights. Most of those are training flights. We have to inspect them every day. You have to train with them every day to be proficient with them, but we have utilized them on 600 cases. And we have currently 14 trained pilots, and we're continuing to expand that program. And our current technology is listed there. Of those 600 cases, many of them have assisted in apprehension of armed individuals that reduce the likelihood of an officer having to engage personally. And it's also supported de-escalation on numerous attempts. I'll show two very short video clips just to kind of help illustrate that in a few minutes here. And these are our video clips. So let's see if, I don't know if this is going to work, but... So it's cut really short, but long story short, this individual was sleeping in a stairwell at a local retail establishment in the city. Somebody called and reported somebody with a firearm next to them. When we got there, we utilized a drone. We did locate a firearm. It ended up being a replica firearm. It was not a real firearm, but it looked very real. Part of the response to that was every available unit, less lethal options, lethal options, tactical plans, a lot of time, a lot of coordination, trying to figure out how you're going to safely address this problem. We were able to use the other drone that you see in the video there at the bottom left corner, and it has an audio upper or audio option to communicate with the individual. We were able to visibly clear the individual with the drone without ever having to make contact with them and call them down the stairwell in a controlled capacity and allow us to safely de-escalate that and only come to find out it was a replica firearm. The second video, this was a call for service at one of our local parks. It was a busy day at one of our local parks, and somebody called in, somebody armed with an assault rifle at the park. We were able to, again, every cop in the city that was available responded, less lethal, lethal options, tactical plans, all sorts of things go into play, ton of time, ton of resources in order to try and safely de-escalate these situations. Instead, with all that at the same time, we were able to deploy the drone, focus in on it and find out that it was an airsoft gun. So instead of bringing teams of lethal, less lethal, tactical plans, everything, we were able to send two officers in, verify. Huge, huge success when it comes to de-escalation for many of these types of potentially volatile situations. Can you get me out of the, I don't know if it's going to let me get out of here? So the next thing is the real time intelligence center. Again, this is an emerging technology for many smaller agencies. And just to be clear, none of that is our police department. That's just hopeful stuff. But again, it's primarily designated for large metropolitan agencies. The technology is scaling into all sizes of departments. Literally two hours ago, I was in my car listening to the radio, and they had a segment on San Jose PD, which is spinning up their real time intelligence center utilizing a data aggregation software system, which we already utilize. It's a different vendor and another company called Fusis, which is through Axon, which allows for information aggregation, which is basically all the cameras that you see, city-led cameras, public-led cameras, privately owned cameras, all that stuff can be housed into one system basically and allow real time information to be fed to the police officer on the street to allow for information to be made aware before we ever arrive on scene. If our efforts are realized, we'll probably be the most advanced regional intelligence center in the greater Bay Area for agencies our size, as well as our DFR program would be one of the biggest in the country for agencies our size for sure. So what does a real time intelligence center do? It increases the safety for our community and for our officers. It improves response times, we'll cover that, improves staff efficiency. It's a force multiplier for our staffing challenges, and it's multidisciplinary. I mentioned this last time where I talked about the opportunity to utilize it for PD, Fire, Department of Water and Wastewater and Public Works for critical incidents and things that happen out in the community. It does not act as a dispatch center. This does not take calls for service. They don't dispatch necessarily. This is a stone alone system for gathering intelligence and feeding intelligence to the real time or real time out to the field units. What's available? Technology for the real time intelligence center. Drone is a first responder, which again is the next phase, is the drone program. Active ALPR alert monitoring. So we have ALPRs right now. Officers pull over on the side of the road, pull up the system and track it through there, or somebody sitting at the station has to do it. Just to go back to the drone real quick too, every time we deploy a drone, it takes a police officer as a pilot, and I have to have somebody standing as an observer, a trained observer. So it takes two people to flow, to fly a drone. This future technology, which isn't future, it's current technology that we're looking to implement, is all done remotely from somebody sitting at a computer in the police department. Quite frankly, they could be sitting at home and flying the drone that's stationed on top of our police department. There's a lot of steps that go into that with FAA and radar clearance and all that stuff, but amazing, amazing technology. Records management, database analysis. There's live city camera feeds as an option, privately owned, we talked about, intelligence integration, we talked about. The actual center in and of itself has extensive technology, robust, robust workstations with high-powered computers and monitors. It's got a live video wall that I think is seven by 12 feet. It's, it's all integrated, so we can put any video feed or anything we want up on the screen for people to look at and make tactical decisions on. And again, multi-jurisdictional opportunities for communications to be able to understand what's going on in cities around us and support them as well. So drone is a first responder. Again, right side, not us, hopeful us. Left side is what a drone as a first responder system kind of looks like. They are little boxes that sit up on top of a rooftop. We've already evaluated several sites within the city, city-owned facilities. We have to get power to them, we have to get a data line to them. They're all self-contained, self-closed. You hit the button, it opens up, drone takes off, gets to where it needs to go in a matter of two minutes, anywhere in the city. So these drones likely will be beating our police officers, especially cover officers to many calls, and it'll allow us to clear a lot of calls as well if we get there and we hear that it's, whatever the circumstances are, we can get there, figure out it's not what's actually being reported and adjust accordingly. So drone is a first responder. The drones that we're talking about are smart drones. They have artificial intelligence capabilities where they have barrier detection, and there's so many systems built into it that allow them to fly autonomously with a pilot, again, that is monitoring what they're doing, where they're going, and giving guidance on what it wants to accomplish in that mission. But the drone has technology built into it to provide safety. So the, or the operator cannot fly the drone into something or violate any ceiling clearances or anything of that nature. It's all built into the system and the software. Again, they're flown remotely from a desk. The way we have it currently proposed, we're looking to have full coverage through probably 90% of the city to have something on scene with a matter of two minutes. It is all secure, radio, 5G and radar covered, all the drones are. We talked about citywide coverage and real time information. Drone as a first responder is a citywide asset. We looked at calls for service for the fire department that we can help out on vegetation fires, structured fires for hotspots, provide them real time intelligence as well. All of these drone systems, we can get on scene, we can send a link to anybody, cellphone, you name it. You can click that link through a text message, and all of a sudden, the video pops up. So fire personnel at the command post can see exactly what's occurring at their fires. We've utilized them already for technical rescues on cliffs. We've done some water tank inspections for the Department of Water and Wastewater. There's also opportunity for monthly pump sites, as well as, we talked about last time, any, you know, call-out type situations for the water department. We can provide them the link. They can see exactly what's going on and make decisions on resources opposed to deploying resources unnecessarily. And same thing for public works call-outs. They are pretty storm resilient, but a lot of down trees. You know, I think back to the one time we had the landslide over at Hillside Park. You know, nobody knew the magnitude of that. You can know the magnitude of that in a matter of a minute with a drone up in the air, so. I feel like I've missed a lot. I'm going to finish on a really good note here, just to make sure we're all happy. These are the newest employees. The two on the left are our two newest community service officers, Ethan Insaldo and Flor Avalos. They've been in the in-house training program for about four weeks now. The two in the middle, Sandra Flores and Brandon Ventero, started today as our new police assistants. Sandra Flores was a records clerk for us last week, and she started as a police assistant today, promotional for her. And then the picture on the right is Officer Eduardo Fernandez-Arias and Gabriel Peña, who graduated the Alameda County Police Academy this morning. So I was at their graduation this morning. So with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'd like to open this up to my colleagues.
Just want to acknowledge you and your entire team, our police officers that are there out in our community that actually utilize this technology. It's showing in the statistics how it's working, and I'm glad to see that because, you know, you only have, you only make a decision and then see the results after they are implemented. And so I want to say, I'm glad to see that we're using technology. I mean, it's, it's where we're at now, and we know it's the future. And hearing, having this real time, you know, center that you've talked about, what exactly does that pertain as far as the total budget? In addition, you know, like what does that look like? I see, you know, having this in-house is going to be an asset. Obviously, I, I see what your presentation states, that all of the data points will be housed here. Obviously, there's a flow to why this center is, is going to be necessary. Do you have that? What is, what does that look like?
Yeah, so the real time intelligence center, again, you know, the biggest annual expense is going to be personnel. Currently, the people that we do have that are going to be staffing that are underfilling police officers. Opportunity to, you know, discuss with finance down the road, whether or not we want to expand or consolidate those numbers. The, the center in and of itself, so we're fortunate to have some available funding in our budget that we were able to move to outfit the majority of what we're looking at now. So the biggest challenge for us was overhauling the space that we had. So we currently have a contract crew that started two weeks ago that are in there now, getting the space prepared. We've looked at the desks and everything else. We have money to fund most of that. The one thing that has helped us significantly is the BSCC Organized Retail Theft Grant. So because of that money that we had, not all of it's getting spent, whether it be because of salary savings, because of, you know, we, we projected those costs at top step officer and everything else. You don't have top step officers. We have some money available in that grant that we were able to talk to BSCC about and move around. They're huge proponents of the real time intelligence center. So they're putting a lot of the funding that we have spare currently into this real time intelligence center with their blessing. So the live video walls, a lot of the technology that's going into it is being funded through that. All the other things that we have that are already there now, whether it be the C3 data aggregation, all the RMS systems, everything we already have is already part of our budget. So it's already been taken care of previously. We're just now housing it in an environment where people are focused on utilizing that on a daily basis.
Okay. No, I mean, it makes a lot of sense to have something centralized versus getting information and then, you know, having systems or personal, like, okay, you put it here, you house it here. We're getting real time information as well as when you're out there in the field, someone actually, you know, systematically is watching it, you know, actually keeping it as well. Okay, that answers my question around like the budget piece. I did, I was going to ask the question around how it was going to be like multi-departmental use, and then you had the slide up, because I was very curious to understand how, how else other departments would be able to utilize, but you answered it in your slide, which is great. You know, depending if there was any external factors around weather or whatnot or emergencies and how that could be utilized by other departments. And then the other piece was, I think, yeah, I think it's, it's really great. I think that, you know, using technology to keep furthering and keeping our community safe is huge. We know that a large piece of it was at We know that a large piece of it was at one point, the retail theft that kept happening and not only in our city, but surrounding cities. And being able to really utilize ALPRs and the drone technology is, is, is so useful. And so I just want to say thank you for that. It's, it's a good use of us to make sure that, you know, our communities are safe, but also an approach where you just showed in your video where it took less time and also less personnel to look at those two items that you mentioned. And so if we are able to continue to grow this type of technology where it also keeps our police officers safe and the community safe, then I think we're moving in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Councilmember Peronio.
I really enjoyed your presentation. Thank you very much. Most importantly, to see what's happening with the new staff, the progress that has been made with regards to the license plate readers. I think that's absolutely fabulous. But what I really, really touched me was seeing how the drones were able to deescalate an issue, a problem, whereas if you had officers walk up and someone picks up that item that looked very, very real, you have to in that split second make a decision. So I was quite impressed. I know those are only two examples, but I wanted to just say, and I know that it's not like just someone can learn how to use that, the training, the classes, everything, being coordinating, being able to coordinate all that so that we have staff, and when you hire them, that they're able to learn and to be hopefully experts eventually in these different technologies. I really liked seeing, I, you know, I know you said this is not us yet, but I'm sure it will be soon enough. So those awesome videos, I'm sure it's, it's going to be us soon.
And for the stars.
Right?
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll get there.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is the positive side of technology, and you demonstrated how safety, and we got great new employees and chief hats off because you're always on top of everything, and you want to make sure about the safety as Councilmember Peronio moved to, that those drones protect our safety for our officers as well as the community, and that's demonstrated here. I'm sure there's plenty more instances, and that if we could have them more across, you know, whatever you need, technology, you know what you need. It's your department. You know how to lead, and thanks for the support of our city manager because I know that this is the way to lead it. This, and your stellar chief were, and the officers in our PD are outstanding. So thank you very much, and I, oh, thank you for the Reyes and them, for one of our Daly City Westmore young man who's still in high school. He's an explorer, but he already knows his path to be Daly City PD. So that tells you about the reflection of our police department, and he lives locally, and he's still in high school. So that's fantastic. Thank you for the outreach and keep moving forward. Intelligence, just bring it to us and got the support. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester.
All right, I've got quite a few things. First of all, Chief, I want to say thank you so much for that presentation. And I had to, I just had to keep writing and put stars, stars. That presentation was definitely updated, and it's relevant to even include the picture on the right hand side to what you said transpired today. That tells me the type of work that you've done to put this presentation together along the way. That presentation should be used everywhere, especially in the community, so that they see exactly as to what the police department is doing. I just want to get a couple of questions, and I have a reason for my madness when I'm going to ask you some of these questions. I see you're smiling. As a matter of fact, I'll start off with the first question. Hopefully, this will make you smile. How many police officers do we have?
Currently?
Yes.
So we're at about 92 and authorized for 112.
Now, see, Chief, you, you went ahead of me because my next question was, how many is our authorized strength? And do we have minimum staffing requirements?
Yes, we do have minimum staffing in the sense that we ensure that we have enough personnel on the street every given shift to ensure their safety and the community safety.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, so we do have minimum staffing.
Yes.
And we are short 20.
Yeah, plus or minus.
Okay.
It fluctuates every day, but yes.
What's the highest star number in the Daly City Police Department?
We don't go based on sequential numbers.
Oh, you don't?
No.
So.
We rotate badge numbers.
Okay, so what's the highest number? This is just.
Two eighties.
Two hundred and eighty?
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any relationship as to why we have 1911 on the Daly City star in your photograph?
It's when the city was incorporated.
Nice. I didn't expect that answer because when I saw 1911, I was looking at the type of Smith, the Colt weapon.
1911 firearm.
1911 firearm. Good job. I just learned something. Okay, great. Minimum staffing. I was, had a question on vacancies and injuries, but I guess the 92 and 112 basically answered that question. Have we ever did a ratio to the population of how many officers per individual in Daly City? I believe we have 108,000, and I could, I could do the math now, but that would translate into X number of officer, officers per.
10,000. So it's one per 10,000 is the typical number that people try and utilize as their, as their go by. Some fluctuate, but we're, we're a little below that, but most agencies try and run about one, 1.2, somewhere in that realm.
One?
One to 1.2 per every 10,000 residents.
Oh, that was.
No, every thousand residents, sorry. So we should have 108 hypothetically police officers for 108,000 population.
Somehow, it seems like you're anticipating the questions that I'm going to ask you, and that was going to be my next question. What do the other cities do? All right, thank you. Any estimate on the retirees within the next five years? How many do you expect to retire?
So I believe I have two this year, maybe two next year, and then it starts to go down pretty significantly from there. I'm, I'm talking maybe five plus years before the next couple. So we're going to become a, a very young tenured organization here pretty soon.
That's amazing because I was, I was, I was going to try to dissect those numbers, and I guess it was based on demographics, but you said it. We have a young department and precluding any injuries and us losing any officers. So at least four within the next two years. All right. Just some other comments I'd like to make. I'm very impressed with the chaplaincy program, and I'm just hoping, and you said the magic word volunteer, just like some of our reserve officers, some reserve officers just do the job as a secondary job just to wear the uniform. And if I'm not mistaken, police chaplains, they can get a uniform and it says police chaplain on their star. And if, if we can expand that later on to include other faiths, I think that would be an excellent thing to do.
Absolutely.
Your crime analysis persons. Now, being, doing investigations myself in the previous years, I know that once I receive a case, there's so many things I have to do to prepare that case, to give it to the district attorney, the investigations that's needed. Hearing that your crime analysis folks is going to assist the detectives, that's a false, a force multiplier. That is a, a great visionary and great thinking. I wish I had that when I was doing the job. Real time intelligence center. Department of Emergency Management has one of those, and I'm sure we can see what they do and not reinvent the wheel. As a matter of fact, later on, I'm going to give Mr. Nevin a, a folder including how much is being paid and how much Daly City is going to have to pay for police and radio services. So the real time intelligence center, so that we don't have individual silos, we can share the information. And one of the information that we can share is AEP, Automated Evacuation Planning, to which I just found out that Daly City has access to that with the other 20 cities in the city. So if a fire breaks out in a particular area, you just use AEP, and it can give evacuation routes suggested, and this is based on real time data. One of, I'm just about done here. One of the things I want to make mention is, what price do we put on safety? There is no price on safety. It's better to have and not need than to need and not have. And with the addition of ALPR and other technologies, and just what you've shown up there, nothing else needs to be said. We can see that. Can you imagine how many officers you would have to send out there just to investigate? And, you know, you always start at the high level to protect yourself, but the deescalation is the, is, is. That's why I like that presentation so much. And as Councilmember Manalo says, she alluded to the fact that not only are we using the drones for the police department, but we're using it across other departments as well. So what I would like to see later on coming up is the cost analysis for the drones. I'm not saying I'm against it, but I would like to know, if we got six drones and you've handled 1,500 calls, and if we were to divide that number, how much basically would keeping this program be? But of course, it provides a deescalation and safety, and I'm also looking at the cost analysis because if you're up there on the water towers and taking pictures, that's not necessarily a police function, but maybe a public works function, and maybe those costs should be divvied up so that the police department doesn't look like they have such a high budget, you know, share the cost amongst the other city. But I like your forevision to look ahead and say, hey, not only can we use this, but the whole city can use this. I'm a firm believer in giving staff the tools that they need to do their job. So from what I can see thus far, keep up the great work. And I'm, I'm really impressed with what our police department is doing. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm just a kick, I, I'm really, really impressed with the presentation as well. I think it was transparent. It shows us the impact of technology. I'm just curious, I think, some of the fears in our community, especially with ICE, and I just want to reiterate, I already know the answer to this, but reiterate, what are the, the connections with using this technology and the relationship between PD and ICE?
Yeah, so the state has laws in place for law enforcement agencies, and we have an internal policy that is very specific to non association to any federal agency for the purposes of any administrative and immigration related situations. So we, we do not communicate with, share data, provide resources towards, or do anything for any federal immigration interests.
Thank you.
Based on our policy and state law.
Yeah, okay. So that's, that's just from my perspective, just, I, I think there's a great program. It's technology in terms of making public safety a priority, but making it safer for everyone. And I, I'm really impressed with where this is going, so.
It's exciting for sure.
Yeah, okay. So I, any other questions, comments? Okay.
Very sorry.
No, it was great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so I'm just going to go ahead and throw it back down to Mr. Nevin.
Thank you. The agenda for the budget study session continues with a follow up to questions from the last budget study session. And tonight's presentation that highlights some proposed position changes and goes into more detail about the projected general fund reserve levels in relation to the council's preferred and minimum reserve targets, and lastly, next steps. Regarding council questions from the last budget study session. Question one, how do we compare to other cities based on the total salary and benefit percentage of the general fund budget? As we saw last budget study session, in Daly City, salaries and benefits account for 73% of general fund expenditures. Some of our neighbors, San Bruno and Redwood City, 71 and 70% respectively, just sort of mirroring Daly City's salary and benefit percentage for general fund purposes. Excuse me. Question number two, what, when was the last time parking fines were updated? Parking fines were last updated in 2019, and commercial parking fines were last updated effective July 1, 2023. These fines are currently being evaluated and will be brought to council for review in the near future. Criminal fines are set by a combination of state law and fines issued by San Mateo County. Question three, may we see more information on the preferred versus minimum reserves? This has been incorporated into tonight's slides, so we'll, we'll look at that in much more detail in a few slides from now. Question four, what percentage of properties are residential versus commercial for property tax? It is estimated based on Daly City's water accounts that about 95% of properties are residential and 5% are commercial. Roughly 21,427 residential water accounts versus 953 commercial water accounts in the city. Question number five, what percentage of property taxes are received by Daly City? This pie chart is from the county of San Mateo Property Tax Report, and Vice Mayor Sylvester was exactly right about the percent of property tax revenues that goes to cities. This chart shows 16% going to cities, and another 2% goes to the successor agencies of former redevelopment agencies. That's RDAs in the chart there, and Daly City has a former redevelopment agency. Now, moving on to the fiscal year 2026, 2027 operating budgets. As a review, this chart shows general fund revenue by type, starting with the highest percentage of general fund revenue property taxes. In the fiscal year 2026 budget request, property tax revenue makes up 42% of total general fund revenue, followed by sales taxes at 22%. This slide continues with the types of general fund revenue by percentage. The total general fund revenue budget request for fiscal year 2026 is close to $122 million, and the budget request for fiscal year 2027 is just over $125.5 million. Next, this chart shows general fund expenditures by type, starting with the highest percentage of general fund expenditures salaries. The total general fund expenditure budget request for fiscal year 2026 is close to $130 million, and the budget request for fiscal year 2027 is just over $134 million. One note that I brought up last budget study session is that salary and benefit budget requests do not include cost of living adjustments or COLAs for city employees. Increases to the budget request will be brought to you throughout the bargaining process with the labor unions. This chart shows general fund budget requests by department. It's the first of two slides. The second slide will continue with the remaining departments in the city. And the total general fund budget request in the last row on this slide is the same as the general fund expenditures by type. Here, it is just being shown department by department. This chart is the first of two slides showing proposed position changes throughout the city. This first slide represents general fund positions. The first position is reclassifying the current office assistant three in the office of the city clerk with a deputy city clerk due to a recent analysis, along with a range adjustment for the assistant city clerk due to compaction issues. Next, for the office of the city manager, after surveying comparable agencies within San Mateo County, is the addition of the economic development manager position and a range adjustment for the assistant city manager position due to the classification being behind market by 8.5%. And this also addresses compaction issues with department heads. There is the request to change an hourly position of HR office assistant with a full time human resources analyst. with a full-time Human Resources Analyst due to increased needs for the Enterprise Resource Planning System, employee and wellness programs. And also, in comparison with other local agencies, we are below average in staffing in comparison to the number of employees in the department. Next is the reclassification of the Financial Services Manager position to a Senior Financial Services Manager position to provide growth and learning opportunities for staff. The next request is for a range adjustment for the Senior Police Assistant for compaction issues. And also a range adjustment for the GIS Coordinator position, which is behind market by 15%. In total, with general fund positions, this would result in two new full-time employee positions, and the cost to change all of these positions would equate to 0.4% of general fund expenditures for fiscal year 2026. The second chart shows proposed positional changes in other funds. A reclassification to two Environmental Compliance and Water Resources Specialists will help to standardize and combine two classifications as a result of long-tenured employee retirements. There is also the request for the reclassification.
Excuse me, Tim. I have a question from Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you so much. Can you go back to the proposed position changes on page 13 that you're sharing? I know that you said that there was some compaction issues on these changes that you, you went over. Are these just salary? Are they with benefits?
Oh, that's a good question. So the...
Because, I mean, when I'm looking through it, when I see 8,000 and then I see 273,000, and then 40 and a 170.
Right.
You know, is it broken down in a certain way? I'm like, this is a big gap.
No, thank you for that question. So the, the two that you mentioned that were the larger dollar amounts, those are actually positions, full-time positions that are not currently in the budgets. We discussed, I believe it's the last budget study session, about taking economic development and having that be within the Office of the City Manager budget. So that would include that Economic Development Manager position, full benefits and full salary for that, that position. That's why that one is the amount that it is. Human Resources, in the current budget, there is an hourly office assistant that's currently budgeted. And the request is to remove the budget for that hourly office assistant and replace that position as a, as a full-time Human Resources Analyst for the needs that were brought up, as I mentioned. The difference in cost is the $170,612, again, for full-time salaries and benefits and taking the savings from the hourly position, and that's the net cost. The other positions are just range adjustments for current positions. And the change in budget on the column on the right just shows the new dollars requested in the budget. So what it, what the difference in cost is from the first position to the second position, or what it costs in terms of the range adjustment for those compaction issues that you mentioned. So thank you for that question because that, you know, there are differences in terms of that second-to-last column change in FTE. Most of those don't involve an actual change in positions, except for those two.
Okay. Yeah, because I noticed, I mean, that's a big number. Those were big numbers compared to what you were explaining around compaction issues. And so I was like, it was like I needed more clarification on that. And so for the HR, it's basically changing an hourly to a full-time. The ECD development is basically a position that is being also created. These are two new positions being created.
Correct. The position does not currently exist in the Office of the City Manager budget, and this would be creating that position in that, in that budget.
And these positions would be going out as far as like they're going to be posted. It'll be posted. It's not necessarily, these are people already. It will be posted for...
That's correct. They, if council adopts the full budget, this would be included in the new organization charts. And then, at that point, as of July 1, we'd be able to go out and post those positions for, for recruitment.
Got it. So HR would be posting these two positions for recruitment.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo, because I was gonna wait to the end of the presentation. I wrote a big old number 13 right here on my paper.
We're on the same wavelength.
You sure are. Yeah, I have questions because those were such big numbers. I think it would help tremendously. We're gonna move for, let's deal with human resources. We're gonna move from hourly office assistant and to actually a title of Human Resource Analyst. I have no problems with that, but can, do we know what the hourly office assistant, what the benefits and the salary was? You know, just something to think about.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me. What, what it would be is for an hourly position, there would be just the hourly wages and also a small amount for social security cost to the city. And hourly employees don't receive full benefits from the city.
Okay, great. Oh, that's good to know.
Yeah.
You know, and then on, as you alluded to with Councilmember Manalo, on the Economic Development Manager, we have, we don't have that existing position at this time. But I guess in the announcement, what I would like to see is how many folks they supervise? You know, I don't know, the, the potential candidate would supervise, you know, X number of employees. You know, like if we put out for a police chief and say, you know, you'd be supervising at least 92 police officers and 30 civilians. I mean, I would like to see that because 273,000 is quite a bit, and...
So I do want to point out that, thank you very much for that comment. It would include the full salary, and then approximately, I would say, 60% of that salary would be an additional cost to the city for benefits.
Wow.
So if you're looking at it in terms of, if you're thinking just salary, it's, it's not just salary. It's the full cost so that we can budget for the position.
Or the salaries, I'm sorry, salaries and benefits.
Salaries and combined with benefits, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. And we talked about the, let's see. The reclassification of the two Environmental Compliance and Water Resources Specialists due to recent long-tenured employee retirements. And also a request for reclassification of two Plant and Equipment Maintenance Mechanics to Senior Plant and Equipment Maintenance Mechanics to create consistency within departments with senior-level positions and aid in succession planning. And finally, the reclassification of two Office Assistant I/2s to two Office Assistant 3s to create flexible staffing opportunities and growth opportunities. These three are all in the Department of Water and Wastewater Resources. That's why they're on a separate page. I, I mentioned other funds. They're just the Enterprise Water and Sanitation Funds. This next chart is something we looked at last budget study session. It starts with fiscal year 2024, full-year actuals, looking at fiscal year 2025, where we think that we're going to end the year as of June 30 of this year. And then looking at the two years of budget requests for fiscal years 2026 and 2027. As mentioned, we did review this in some detail last budget study session, so just to go down and give highlights, there was a small deficit in fiscal year 2024, $47,024, decreasing reserves slightly, and reserves ending at $63,224,773, or 6.3 months of reserves. We'll look at the calculation of that again in the next couple of slides. 2025, as mentioned, we're still looking at a potential to have the full year end with a roughly $1.5 million actual deficit. That would decrease reserves down to $61.7 million, and the months of reserves would be 5.8 months. At the bottom of the chart, we added two new rows, preferred reserves, or three months of reserves with council's policy, and minimum reserves of two months. And I just wanted to show that to you in, in total dollar amounts and what that, that equates to. Again, we're gonna look at some of those calculations, and I'll, I'll make them very brief. If my daughter were here, she'd ask me to go quicker during the calculations, but if we take the reserve line from that chart that we were just looking at, and the 63 million, the 61 million, 53 and 45 million, and then divide that number by the operating expenditures in that given fiscal year, that will give you a decimal point. The first year is .527, second year, .485. If you multiply that decimal number by 12, that gives you the reserve amount in months. So that's where we get to 6.3 months, 5.8 months. If, if what we budget for fiscal year '26 and '27 were to become actual deficits, we would see the reserves in months decrease to five months and then to 4.1 months. Just again, calculating the preferred reserves, that's taking the operating expenditures and looking at it on a monthly basis, and either looking at it times three months, or for preferred reserves, and looking at it times two, two months for minimum reserves. Again, just showing the dollar amount for what those reserves look like. Showing you the reserves and sort of the, the decreasing level of reserves kind of shows the, the trend or the forecast that we're currently looking at. This chart is what we shared with you back in March during the first budget study session. Fiscal year 2025 showed a projected general fund deficit at that time of $3.68 million. So I wanted to show you that as a reminder from what we looked at in March, but I wanted to update it with what we're looking at right now. So this is a, this is the actual updated financial forecast, and this projection changed again to the $1.5 million projected budget deficit for the end of this year, fiscal year 2025. And they're also updated, these charts are updated to reflect new projected deficit as well as the projected deficits for fiscal years 2026 and 2027. Those are currently $7.72 million and $8.53 million. I'll just go back very quickly. I don't mean to take up too much time, but those are the numbers that are here in the operating surplus slash deficit columns on the last two columns, $7.2 million and $8 million there. So this, this chart just updates where we are. We don't plan on seeing the forecast become reality. As we've talked about in the past, we plan on looking at this as often as we can and making adjustments as needed. But this does show on the right what happens to the reserve levels with continuing deficits. We would be below the green line or the preferred target level of reserves by fiscal year 2028, at the end of that year. The following year, 2029, we'd actually be below the minimum reserve level of two months. And then the red on the far right is where no jurisdiction wants to be, and that's, that's basically a bankruptcy situation. So what we're looking at is adjusting every year what that looks like and, and also keeping track of that so we're not heading in that direction. I bring that up just because we were talking about the reserve levels and the preferred reserves and the, and the targeted reserves, preferred and minimum reserves, excuse me. This is, again, we, we looked at this last time. These numbers are, are closer to being final, closer to what are going to be coming to council for full-budget adoption. There are four separate categories within Daly City. We've talked a lot about the general fund. We've also looked at, last time, budget study session number two, major city funds, also minor city funds, and in the middle, enterprise funds, the water fund and the sanitation fund. So together, if we look at the middle column fiscal year 2026, the total citywide, citywide budget for, in revenue is $243 million, and the citywide expenditure budget or request is $238.7 million. Lastly, just quickly, next steps. Next month in May, we're going to continue negotiations with labor groups. We'll be presenting the fiscal year 2026 and '27 operating budgets as well as the capital budgets. So we'll look at those capital budgets in detail as well. And then in June, the full budget will be brought to the city council for consideration for adoption. And will go into effect July 1. So that concludes my presentation this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nevin. Are there any last comments, questions, feedback? Councilmember DeJavani.
Thank you. I'm gonna do what Council, what Vice Mayor did. I was gonna ask the question about page 13 as well. And so when we get ready to approve the budget as we're coming up, and we, I see here, you listed that we, obviously, we're gonna have labor negotiations, and we're currently in a deficit. So page 13, is there any way, I don't know how it is, that because we're in a deficit, are any of these able to be phased in? Rather than because we're in a deficit, now we're creating new positions? That, how can we afford new positions? And I'm sure that'll be coming up with our labor groups or whomever, and yet we're in a deficit.
Thank you very much for that question. The, as mentioned, two of the positions on slides 13 are new positions. The, the Economic Development Manager position is going to be in the Office of the City Manager, where we did a study showing that, that most neighboring cities, that's where that economic development rests in that office. And then, secondly, with the Human Resources Analyst, the, the way we had budgeted for fiscal year 2025 included an hourly office assistant, which the intention was to help with all the additional duties that Human Resources was performing, especially with our new Enterprise Resource Management System, Enterprise Resource Planning System, sorry, ERP system. But in looking at HR in more detail, we, as mentioned, just a few things that have changed their situation in terms of employee wellness programs. There's also the new Women's Commission that HR is in charge of. And looking at comparisons of local agencies, just to give you a, a small sort of glimpse, most agencies would have, at the level of employees that City of Daly City has, full-time employees, HR would most likely have around nine or 10 full-time positions, and we have six. So that's, that's a much smaller number than, than the average of most of our neighboring cities. So for those two positions in general, that, that's sort of the reasoning for that. And the others on this page, as mentioned on this slide 13, are, are range adjustments for specific issues related to compaction and other issues. And as you mentioned with labor negotiations, it's a very good point because some issues, like the issues that we're talking about this evening and showing you in terms of compaction, is exactly what we talk about with some of the bargaining groups, that they bring issues of compaction to the city, and we look at those and evaluate those. And in this situation, the city is being proactive in looking at some compaction issues and trying to adjust those for the next budget cycle so that they don't persist.
So I'm not saying like they're not needed. I'm just trying to figure out the money wise on how to present a deficit, but yet we have more money out. But I, I understand what you're saying, and thank you for the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and also, just as a preview, small, sorry to take more time, but I plan on coming to you and looking at the full budget as we've been looking at it over the past few months. I've given you some risks from my consideration as to going into this next two-year budget cycle. But I also want to maybe bring, you know, some potential-type wins, you know, some projects that are happening around the city and what that could look like in the next two years. Just so they're, looking at the VLF shortfall and hoping that the state continues to fund that, that those are pretty big issues, and when we... that, that those are pretty big issues, and when we get those things, they're big wins for us. So I want to also kind of show that as well.
So that way, that what Vice Mayor alluded to was, we will know more about what that manager would look like and how big his department would be under that manager, because I support what he asked. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Manalo.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. You know, and thank you for this presentation. I think that seeing the updated numbers are helpful. And, you know, I did call out those two items on number 13 just because it didn't all necessarily fit in with just getting it up to compaction issues.
Compaction issues, yeah.
And so you clarified that. But I think most definitely around economic development, we're looking at the forecast that we have now in the city years down the line. And if we are to ensure, and I know that, I think it was in 2018 when I was mayor, bringing back the economic development specialist position was really around being forward-thinking because if we weren't looking towards finding ways to get revenue to the city, which when we get revenue to the city is what we're able to use to pay for, you know, services, our staff, our personnel. And so, you know, having that type of position is extremely important. I know it was taken away during the Great Recession. You know, I'm grateful that, you know, during that time in 2018, my colleagues at that time was able to see that it's an important position. And so I think we need to look forward, and if we're always trying to find ways around having more revenue into our city, then we need to see how, you know, I mean, this role is going to be very important to bring in revenue to our community. I mean, we're a very unique situation. We don't have biotech in our city. We really rely on our sales tax, which is around our restaurants, our car sales, and retail. And so obviously for us, it's working thankfully. And with the community, in 2020, we did increase our sales tax, and we see other cities starting to do it now, but we were, we did it ahead, I mean, back during that time, really to what, bring more income and revenue into our city. We were able to bring back services through that, really bring back a full engine and personnel, right? With Engine 95. And so it's, you know, when you look at hand-in-hand what that is, this position is around economic development. And what does economic development mean? It means how are we bringing back more revenue to our city? And that means economic development, which lies under, is it another car vendor? Is it, you know, more retail? Is it more restaurants? Is it spurring our small businesses on the ground? And so this is, you know, something I think is important in that realm. And I only say, I think it's important for us to also just highlight when we do put these positions out there that, whether it's for the HR one or the economic development manager or whatnot, I just know that being in public service, there are, you know, that's the reason why we have the Personnel Board and HR does an amazing job, but I know that these jobs in public service, like, there is a processes. And that's why I want the community to know, and those that are watching, that there are processes out there and that these jobs will be posted so that folks out there, as you all know in civil, you know, roles that you can apply. So thank you.
Councilmember Pranay.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to piggyback on Councilmember Manalo. It's so important for us to realize that there's times when we need to spend that money. Because if you, it's kind of like you need to spend money to make money, and this type of a position, hopefully, the goal, I would guess, when I see this position, is that we are going to look outside the box. Perhaps we bring in biotech, perhaps we find that, and that that would assist us, the city, long-term. So this may be something where we say, someone might say, wow, you know, but it's a small investment to then bring to the City of Daly City the income that we need through the businesses, exactly what Councilmember Manalo said. It's so very important not to lose sight, not just to look at the numbers, but to realize the value to have some person a position like this for us here in Daly City. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Glenn Sevester.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're on that topic, I just wanted to reiterate, just like we have a city manager, we have a Assistant Chief of Police, we have planning, we have HR. Each one of those departments carries FTEs. If we were to make a job of a manager with no FTEs underneath, I would have a problem, but I would wait till I get the full-blown aspect as to, I'm actually looking forward to say what benefits. I've seen part of the benefits right now, and I'm looking forward to hearing more. So in closing, I want to say, Mr. Nevin, slide number four and number 10 answered my question and it does match, the numbers match, I just wanted to let you know that. I think that's an excellent job. Every time I've heard a budget presentation in the past on this council, I basically had to hold on to my wallet. And I would say with what we've gone through the past couple of months, I still hold on to my wallet, but it's not as bad because you provide full and complete transparency. And as I've always said before in the past, a confused mind will always say no. And you've made it with your staff much easier to understand so that when we make these tough decisions, it's because we're armed with the right information. And my last comment I wanted to make was, how much do you weigh? No, 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 don't answer. Don't answer. What I was about to say, whatever it is, you are definitely worth your weight in gold. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments? Okay. So with that, I'd like to say thank you for the staff, Mr. Nevin's staff, for providing a very, very transparent report, presentation, and gives us a little bit more clear idea of what is headed for us in the near future and years coming. So thank you again.
Thank you very much.
And we're looking forward to the next steps. Yes?
Yeah, just real brief, we've brought you a budget that we believe we need to execute the council's vision. We've done a real deep dive into the analysis, and we wouldn't be bringing you anything that we didn't need to successful, a successful execution of the council and the community's vision in the next two years. So I just wanted to let the council know that there's a lot of analysis that has gone into us this over the last six months, so thank you for listening.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you to staff.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we'll just go ahead and slide through the next actual way for city clerk. We'll get everybody.